Follow the code. Thank you. Follow the code.
You need a pen. Are we live?
And then we are live. Okay.
I don't know, Jesse, if you want, oh, Dan's on it. He saw what I was thinking. Couple of agenda and then the executive summary.
Okay.
And then that.
All right. Hey, sorry. So sorry.
Slide that one back my way.
Thank you.
Stable.
We can.
There's none. There wasn't a quorum. We thought about naming Andy as a planning commissioner, but.
Don't want that.
There seems to be that's that much. Okay, here this is for you.
Oh, thank you.
Are you guys?
We're good. We're live.
Okay, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Sorry for the late start. We will bring to order the Conwood Heights Planning Commission Working Meeting for July 6, 2022. I'm going to review the business meeting agenda items, which I think is just the ZTA 19001 for the sensitive lands.
That's correct. And then just the eight minutes.
Yeah. So are there any additional discussion items for today before we jump into the the business item?
Yes, two things very quick. One, two new commissioners were appointed by the city manager and approved by the city council last night. They will join at the next meeting. That is Mike Shelton, representing District One, previous city council member, and then Sean Steinman, who lives in District Four. He owns the Rooted Cafe down the street. And he's on our general plan steering committee as well. So be great to have them both on. We're short staffed tonight, but we should be back up to almost a full commission at the next meeting. And then speaking of the next meeting, the next meeting is going to be a little different. It's going to be a joint work session with the city council. That's all general plan. So it's a general plan workshop to talk growth and development and land use strategies and that kind of thing. So that will be the plan for July 20th, and then starting in August, we'll be back to normal commission business. That's it.
All right. Thanks, Mike.
Oh, that's a good question. Heather Sess, will we have any public hearing on that commission on the 20th?
No, just a work session.
Just a work session. Thank you.
All right. Just making sure I was in town.
Yep. The general plan will come through the commission as well when it's when it's fully drafted. This is just a workshop.
Certainly be public hearing. But once we get there, this is just sort of the first opportunity for us to introduce it to you.
All right. Then we'll turn it over to staff for the sensitive lands item. All right. Thank you. I'll go ahead and get us started with a few slides. So the commission, you're all very familiar with this project. You've been working on it, I think, for just about every meeting this year. We're getting to a place where we feel like we've got it. Good draft, basically a final draft that we're ready to to take some action on. So what we'll do is a quick review. And for the benefit of those listening, those who are joining us who may not have been in attendance in the past, city is doing an update to our sensitive lands ordinance, which is the part of the zoning ordinance that establishes the regulations and the policies for reviewing new development, new building permits in areas that have some sort of sensitive lands hazard, something like a flood zone, fault zone, those types of areas. So we've been involved in a process to update those standards. We've been receiving comments from the public and from the commissioners making updates month to month. At the last meeting on June 1st, we held hearing, we received some comments, we made a few updates. We've added a few things at the request of the commission as well as based on feedback from city engineer and geologist. And I've put together what we feel is a pretty good final draft. So a couple of the things that have come up, DRC was a big topic of conversation last month. Generally, the comments that we received, the concerns that I felt came from the public were not wanting to have any one staff member with the ability to unilaterally approve something, wanting to make sure that there's kind of an open process and that the DRC, which is the Development Review Committee, which is a group of staff members, would have some more oversight over the process. So a few things that we've done to try to achieve that. We updated the definition of city to state that for the purposes of this chapter, and unless otherwise specified, all decisions, approvals, and recommendations by the city shall be made by the Development Review Committee, DRC. So we added that into the definition of city so that anywhere throughout the chapter where it says, you know, submit this to the city or the city will approve this, that we have that in the definition spelled out. So we know that it's not just one staff member approving stuff. And then we also updated the definition of DRC to state that the DRC consists of members approved by the city council by a resolution by resolution once each calendar year. And so you might remember in previous drafts, we had removed that requirement for the city council to approve the DRC members. But again, that was kind of the feedback was people wanted to be sure that we have oversight and be sure that the city council is involved. And so by keeping that in and by clarifying that this would be something that would happen every year that they would adopt a resolution about the DRC, then that was how we got that in place. A few other things, just minor non-habitable structures. There was a line in the applicability section that said non-habitable structures are not required to comply with the provisions of this chapter. So non-habitable structure be something like detached garage, maybe a swimming pool, something like that. In certain hazard zones, it's not a problem, right? You could build, let's say, a swimming pool in the fault area because it's not a habitable structure. But you could not do the same project on top of a steep slope or in some other hazards, you know, you may still need to evaluate it, do an analysis or report. And so we just removed that. Each individual hazard area has its own guidelines in the appendix for how those will be evaluated. Steep slopes is another one that we've kind of tweaked again a little bit, and I, this came up in one of the written comments. Think it'll be a subject of conversation tonight. What we've done is we have changed it to say that no development, including all grading, retaining walls and structures. So grading is new there. We wanted to clarify that even if you're not building a structure just to cut into the side of a hillside or something is not allowed. So no grading, retaining walls and structures are permitted on slope areas in excess of 30% with exceptions for isolated slopes smaller than two acres. So I could go through that a little bit. I think that's probably one of the more major changes. But generally, in reviewing our slopes map with the engineer and geologist, there are a lot of, for instance, Russell Park Road, which is off Wasatch Boulevard, some of these, the C Streets, Catalina and Camino, where there's existing neighborhoods that were built on a slope and people have slopes on the backyards. We found a few examples that where the slope itself taken altogether is more than an acre. Wanted to leave an option open for people in those existing subdivisions to be able to build retaining walls or little things that meet the requirements of the code. So that was the thinking in that. We also added a few more details about retaining walls. So when retaining structures are permitted in those areas, they're limited to four feet in height, not to exceed 12 feet total terrace. So we'll, we can go through that if you have one questions.
I want to clarify there quickly. This does not apply east of Wasatch Boulevard. The whole foothill east of Wasatch is that exception is not applicable up there. And then it largely came from the city engineers. They they felt strongly about the two acre inclusion in there just because of the rationale Andy explained. So that's, that's why it changed. And that's where it came from after the city engineer was reviewing it again and you know, kept thinking on that. They they proposed the two acres. So we defer to them on that.
If a developer subdivides to two acres or less, would they be exonerating from this requirement?
It's, it's the size of the slope, not, not it, it's, it doesn't take into account where property lines are, which is, it's the rationale on these streets behind us where you have city hall up here and Fort Union down here, and you have these long continuous slopes that have, you know, 10, 15 houses along them. That slope can, when added cumulatively, can be up to two acres in size, even though it's a bunch of different parcels.
And same thing would apply going horizontally across the slope.
Yeah, yeah. Any slope 30% that that is that cumulative size regardless of where property lines are.
What we're trying to achieve is, you know, the large natural areas that we really, you know, the objectives of the code are to not only for, you know, health and safety and to make sure the structures are engineered correctly, but also to preserve, you know, other areas for natural beauty and views and stuff like, we've had conversations about that. But, you know, we, and we can go as strict as the commission or ultimately the city council feels like. We're trying to strike the balance of making sure we preserve those large continuous hillsides without making it overly burdensome for existing homeowners who may want to build an addition or a deck or something in existing neighborhoods. And so that's where we landed. You know, if we need to discuss it further or refine it, we can. But we felt like that was a good kind of compromise to make things work. But as Mike said, in any case, if there's any sort of disturbance on a 30% slope, even under this exception for smaller isolated slopes, they still have to go through the process, have a slope stability study approved by the city, meet all the other requirements in the section.
So how I was just gonna, so if, if it is smaller than two acres and they would want to do something on this in the slope, then it does require approval and.
You still have to do a study, have a permit, make sure that everything's reviewed and yeah.
So what is the, I guess I'm trying to understand the reasoning for even defining. If it, if it has, if you still have to have the whole, everything evaluated, why is there the definition of two acres?
We want to make it very clear that if you're not, you know, if it's one of the larger slopes or up in the foothills, it's just no grading, retaining wall structures, no.
Oh, I see. Okay.
And so we're making it much stricter or at least less vague than the current code is in saying, well, you just, you can't even grade it. You can't, because some people have argued in the past on some projects that it says you can't develop on a 30% slope, but the grading and fill, cut and fill section says you can grade it up to 50%. And so we just, we wanted to be clear, you we're trying to preserve these large slopes.
That makes sense.
But if you, if you've got a smaller one, if you're in one of these neighborhoods, according to these rules, you still have to do it in a safe way and evaluate the hazard. So that, that's what.
That makes sense. Thank you. Thank you.
So a few other quick updates. We updated the compaction, minimum compaction section. So a few other um, quick updates, uh, we updated the compaction, minimum compaction section. And forgive the noise, sorry, they're working on that roundabout right next to. Yeah, exactly, so that, this is not new, um, we just um, added, I think landscape areas was not included in the previous versions. Um, I've just had our geologist review, uh, these are the numbers that were recommended to include. Um, permits on existing lots, you may remember from one of our earlier meetings, permits on existing lots. Uh, is a new section that was not, it's not currently in the code. It had a bunch of requirements for statements to be submitted. Uh, for engineers to show that they have liability insurance. So we had some discussions about that early on and that was important to the commission to keep those requirements in. We've gone through, we've added a few things and removed a few things that we felt were redundant that were already included elsewhere. We added a statement to clarify that the requirements of the section are in addition to all other applicable requirements detailed in the chapter. It was a little bit confusing, um, that previously, it almost felt like if you were to read through it that. If you had an existing building lot in a subdivision. That you could just get an engineer to write a statement saying it was safe rather than going through the whole process. Um, that was never the intent, nor do I think that was really how it was, but just to make it abundantly clear. We added that statement to make sure this is in addition to, once you've gone through all the studying and analysis. You'll have um, to submit all of these items. We've removed the the portions of the section that were already required elsewhere, so. Um, it it said to include a statement regarding the suitability of development and buildable area. Those are already required, you know, throughout the appendix, um, and with any report that's provided. They're gonna have to make a final conclusion and recommendations that will include that. Um, things like factors of safety and other disclosures were also already required elsewhere, so we've removed those. And then we also added a requirement for a civil engineer to review all reports. As well as the structural engine, which the previous draft just said. Structural engineer essentially needs to read all the reports, submit a statement saying that everything was designed accordingly. Now both the civil and structural will need to submit that sort of a statement. Along with the other things, the liability insurance and the other requirements of the section. So I'll uh, I'll turn the time over to Samantha, we've got a few updates to the riparian protection area.
Yeah, so we packaged it all together this time, since we're doing this all as one sled update, figured it was time to kind of merge the two, so. It's been included in your documents that cover the executive summary and staff report. Um, but I'll still cover the slides here, so. Um, just again, for the benefit of anybody in our audience who's maybe tuning in for the first time, um, our updated sensitive lands ordinance. Includes a riparian protection area, which essentially begins at the waterways top of bank and then is split into four buffer areas from there. Um, it hinges on this general concept of each buffer area being regulated a little bit differently with what's allowed as far as development. With the buffer area closest to the waterway being the most strict on what you can do in it. Um, I'll just point to the goals here listed on the slide, I'm not going to read them all out, but these are the guiding principles for this section of the ordinance. Um, based on some feedback we received from the commission and the public in our last iteration. We have in this draft, um, extended the total riparian protection area from one hundred feet to one hundred and twenty five feet. We're able to meet with a great riparian expert in our community who uh, very patiently. Worked with us on how to, how to word this and how to cap it and, and this is what we're presenting tonight. Um, so along with this extension from one hundred to one twenty five. We've introduced a fourth buffer area, so area D is now included, it used to just be A through C. Um, and and updates were also made to kind of what's allowed in those areas, so. I'll first point out that we specified the accessory structures which were already allowed in area B in the last draft. We clarified in this draft that they are not to be used for human occupancy, so we're pushing um, habitable spaces farther from the creek. Um, which the rationale there is largely a flood risk, just wanting to keep hazard from a possible flooding event away from human life. Um, and then we've also introduced a standard that specifies the total structural footprint in area C. Is a maximum of two thousand square feet and the rationale for this was largely a habitat and groundwater recharge. Um, when we cover too much of the area. In the riparian protection area with roof lines, we limit the amount of water that falls back into the ground and recharges. Um, into those stores and so limiting the coverage that's in area C and and pushing any additional square footage farther into area D. Allows us to have more groundwater recharge closer to the creek, which is an important riparian function. Um, so just to, just to specify, since this is kind of a new topic that we've introduced here. The total square footage cap of two thousand square feet includes all buildings, so if you have an accessory structure and you have. Some of your primary structure in area C, you're limited to two thousand square feet in footprint, not in number of stories combined, just the footprint. And then if you desire additional square footage in your footprint beyond that, that's, that's fine, but you have to put it in area D and beyond, just to keep things. A little bit more open, closer to the creek. Um, I do have a visual representation of this too that I'll pull up that I hope will clarify. Um, and then finally, we addressed the regulations surrounding coarse coarse woody debris. Um, which was a fun topic we we discussed last time, um, we wrestled a little bit with how to regulate it and. Really realized that it's highly situational in some circumstances, leaving this debris is beneficial for the ecosystem's health. In other circumstances, it can be hazardous if a flood event mobilizes the debris and projects it downstream, so. Um, the current draft here instead just compels homeowners to consult with a riparian expert on a case by case basis, kind of at a. By or beware type of level. Okay, so this was the previous draft, it always looks a little bit weird on our screens, but you see it was just a hundred feet, area A, B and C. And then what we're showing here is the extension to one twenty five with area D added. Um, I'll just quickly walk through, so as a, as a refresher, here in area A, no structures are allowed. Uh, over here in area B, accessory structures are allowed, but their maximum footprint is two hundred square feet, they cannot be habitable. Here in area C, accessory and primary structures are allowed, but the maximum total footprint is two thousand square feet. And then here in area D, accessory structures and primary structures are allowed. And any additional square footage must be located here or beyond, so. That I believe constitutes my update, um, this is more for our business session, but we are recommending that the commission forward a recommendation of approval. To the city council, any action by the commission will be a recommendation, since this is a legislative item. Um, and then we have our findings here, which have also been included in the staff memo, um. That we have available on the table, and then we get into model motions, so. I think this would be a good opportunity, we have a good amount of time left for us to answer any questions on. Either the um, hazard areas that Andy covered or the riparian production area. I do see um, Commissioner Evler has his hand raised, I don't know if anybody in the room wanted to share a question first or. Okay, Commissioner Evler, if you want to unmute.
Thanks, Sam, um, just a question, um. I I know we had discussed about uh, the riparian zone uh, mappings and a GIS overlay. Um, or is that something that that will get updated as as part of once this slides ordinance is is passed?
Yes, absolutely, so we wanted to introduce this extended buffer area, the previous mapping, mapping efforts we'd done stopped at a hundred feet. Per the past iterations.
Right.
Um, so we've introduced this um, new iteration here, which has the hundred twenty five feet, has area D. Um, if that's something that the commission makes a recommendation of approval on, we'll coordinate with our GIS staff to reflect that in the mapping, which. Would then go to city council and if it's ultimately adopted, would be part of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
I remember in a previous uh, presentation, you had counted how many houses were in. Existing houses were in area A and area B.
Sure.
And C, do you have any idea of how many existing structures might exceed the two thousand square foot footprint? That you're proposing in area C?
It's a good question, so we did just like some rough average analysis and it looked to be rare that a structure exceeded that, that being said. With larger homes, it certainly is possible, in the riparian protection area ordinance or section, um, you're allowed to keep what you have. That's legally existing today, so certainly if you had. Let's say three thousand square feet in area C, you would be allowed to to maintain that, to keep that, um, it's just that if you wanted to build that new for the first time, you'd have to meet the current standard. So my answer to that would be, it is um, more common for it to fall below that two thousand square foot threshold, we tried to be. Understandable with um, giving people enough space, um, but if if the home legally exceeds that today, it would be allowed to continue.
Um, in previous meetings, we talked about how you established the top of bank and I missed last month, so if you covered that last month, I'm sorry, but. Have you talked about what authority you're using for that?
Yeah, so the top of bank is actually defined in the definition section of the ordinance, and there's a few different. Uh, clarifications on how it's done, just because the, the way a bank is. Situated can vary widely, you can have a bank where it's really kind of one tier and then you reach the top, or you can have a bank where it sort of terraces. Um, so I'm just gonna flip it open to make sure I read it correctly, but there was luckily a lot of precedent work on defining it from other ordinances around the country. So it helped us to kind of utilize the language that other cities have used to define that. Um, let's see, it has it here, so it's defined as a location based on the hinge points of a bank. Um, where the riparian protection area starts to be measured from, it can be derived from a single hinge point, which is what we talked about. The bank is sort of just a single tier. Um, where it has a sloped bank rising from the toe of the bank to the hinge point, top of bank may also be derived from multiple hinge points. And that's when we get into using the FEMA hundred year flood plan as far as calling that top of bank, so. We see here that if um, it's derived from multiple hinge points and levels off one or more times. We use the hinge point directly at or above FEMA's hundred year flood surface elevation as top of bank and go with that. Um, which was also reviewed by FEMA and down to be a compatible way of kind of reckoning the two data sets.
And so this would be, the top of bank hinge point and all this would be evaluated by a surveyor and indicated on the ALTA survey.
Correct, so there's a statement of qualifications in here as well, which specifies the determinations, um. Yes, analysis should be prepared by a licensed professional hydraulic engineer, hydrologist, wetland scientist, flue real geomorphologist or other. Equivalent qualified individual.
Okay.
Oh, oh.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, I just had one quick question and I'm just gonna, I don't have a printout, but it's nineteen seventy two zero five. L eight, there's, it's talking about sidewalks and. And it says ample, it defines that there will, it says that it will be ample. And I just.
Andy's gonna share the screens, we pull the script right up.
Development shall provide ample pedestrian vehicle.
Well, what is, what does ample mean?
I, I don't think that is defined and so.
I haven't, I can't remember if we talked about it last time or maybe we didn't get to it, I'm just, because I just, that's really, I think that's really important that there are. Ample, but what, but what does, but what does, what does that mean?
Certainly, a intention of doing this ordinance update is to clarify confusing or unclear language, so I think if there's. A terminology that the commission would prefer to see as a recommendation there, um, the the more clear we can be, the better.
Do we? I, 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 I was, I was thinking through, what do we, what do we say instead of ample, I mean, I don't disagree that ample's. Good, but do we, do we need, maybe we don't need to provide. More than that, I just get nervous when there's a vague term when you're talking about development, so.
Something that's done in other sections of the ordinance is it refers to other, other ordinances like our. The, the ordinance, the public works department uses to require sidewalks and things like that. Um, we reference adopted master plans, if there's trail or pedestrian connections. In an area in a master plan and now we're redeveloping, we can then require that if it's an adopted plan. So we could take a shot at at adding some language like that.
Well, that's a good, that's a great idea, I think if we said, um, instead of ample, say must meet.
In accordance with our regulations, adopted master.
I think that, I, I think that would be good.
It's a good suggestion.
I would.
I, I'd add a plus one to that and that, that, that when we're talking about high density and. Um, those, those buzzwords that make people really nervous, if we're addressing it. From a pedestrian standpoint and a connectivity standpoint, that serves the interest of the whole city, but figuring out what. What that standard is and how that connects to the master plan, I'm, I look forward to the discussion in a couple of weeks, but I hope that we'll see. Kind of interconnectivity and that, that, I love it when documents refer to one another and that. The connectivity of documents to reference one another, I think helps people feel more comfortable that. You know, when we talk about high density, this is where we're trying to make sure that. Uh, sensitive lands and uh, density needs and population needs and. Growth opportunities and growth risks are all kind of cooked into the fabric. Um, I have a question on the riparian.
Yes.
If we can go back to your slide.
Yeah, oh, I just have my assistant here.
Great. Fantastic job.
Yes, I also will verify he's not. What was your question?
My question is, um, and I, I appreciate the modifications to this.
Sure.
Um, a hypothetical, if, if a large property, um, that was built in land C, uh, area C and. Area D were to be split up in a way that, you know, okay, you've got twenty thousand square feet. And you want to divide it up so that there's, you know, four separate parcels that go into. Uh, area C.
Okay.
Then the rest of the massing happens in area D. Is there anything preventing uh, preventing that kind of a configuration, even though. You would, you would potentially just based on pure square footage, potentially squeeze that into a, a. Fairly small area if the lots were subdivided in such a way, can you? I don't know if I'm saying that right.
You have to have multiple buildings, because you generally can't have buildings cross property lines.
Uh huh.
So if you, if someone were trying to build a really big structure and then get around this requirement by putting arbitrary property lines in. I, I think they run into an issue because they couldn't build a big structure and then bifurcate that structure with a property line.
I think it also um, may be helpful to, to note too that regardless of where a property line falls. The riparian protection area is measured from the waterway, which would be staying as a static form, so even if the property were split into various segments. It would, I, I think we understand that each segment would then have its own series of ser, of area A, B, C and D. Because it would still be measured from that waterway, so you would still have those same restrictions on each parcel.
I see what you're saying, my, my concern is that if they wanted to get eight thousand square feet into area C. They would just say, well, let's just subdivide it into four lots, so we can, we can get eight thousand square feet.
I think then, though, they would need to build four buildings.
Right.
Or built, and that's what I'm saying, and that, that's my hypothetical and you're.
That actually achieves the purpose of the ordinance by limiting per lot the amount of.
Mm-hmm.
Space to fit two thousand square feet into that area in general, the lot's gonna have to be a certain size to even be eligible to fit that.
Mm-hmm.
Like, I think it kind of self-regulates as best as it can.
Absolutely.
I think it does, also when considering not only that structures can't cross property lines, but that they also have to be set back from the same property lines, so you have.
That's where my brain goes, Sam, like I'm wondering if just for that, for the recharging argument that if um. If we're still in area C in an area where um, we want to make sure that the setbacks. And I don't know, I don't know if there would be precedent for this or not, but uh, the setbacks from the, from the perpendicular property lines. To make sure that sufficient recharging were happening, so if we didn't end up with a situation where in certain zones. You're trying to max out and obviously we have a range depending on what zone you end up in. That we would want to make sure that we get maximum amount of recharging if they're going to go into area C, anyway.
A few socks maybe if I could, um, so you run into all the usual zoning stuff, so. You know, if it's a new lot, it has to be the primary use that's allowed in the zone, so you know, you couldn't have like. I say you want to build a, a huge mansion, you can't attach your ten car garage or something because that's too big. So then you want to create a new lot and put your garage there, because then you run into, well, it's a new single family lot. Because then you run into, well, it's a new single-family lot, that has to be its own house, so you've got that along with the setbacks that we've talked about. We also have just a general overall thirty percent impervious surface maximum in these sensitive areas. So that will further regulate what can be built. Think we've got a, from a couple of different angles, reasons why. Hopefully should avoid any, you know, sort of unforeseen workaround. So and then that's how I would look at it.
One last clarification, if hypothetically, some of these, some of these riparian areas are just such fantastic places. I mean, one of the most popular places in cottonwood highnesses, the the pathways that um that. But up against like Big Cottonwood Creek, for example, if there are any of those waterways, um. Um. If it's on private private property, I'm wondering, just wondering out loud, I would love for us to incentivize somehow that um. Even though a pathway is potentially impervious, that if it were a a public walkway, and and I don't know what that would look like, that that that. That's treated in a special way that um, just think about that and just see what that would look like, just for, you know, public good. To be able to access that, that if we're, we're dealing with a larger entity to try to incentivize good behavior. I just would love for us to see. Those access to those waterways are beautiful places, and it decreases the flooding risk, and it also provides a degree of protection, we've seen such a benefit. That stuff going into the retention pond.
Yeah, trails are allowed in all areas, including area A. In area A, it's allowed with analysis required, so a study needs to be done to ensure that it um min- minimizes any like erosion risk or flooding risk. But trails are treated in the table of use separately from structures, and they are allowed in all four. Um, there is a specification that in area A, there has to be fifty percent of area A landscape, so you couldn't just pave the whole thing as a trail. Um, but we did want to leave room for for the potential to have trails there, we think it's a wonderful use, it's consistent with the seven greenways visioning plan, which we participated in last year. Um, so we we have called out trails as a separate line item.
Great. Thank you.
Unfortunately, the public was pretty vocal about removing the section of trail on Little Cottonwood Creek.
That's true.
That was in the, that was in the trails and master plan.
And that was shown.
I didn't know that.
That was shown also in the seven greenways plan was a a trail connector along Little Cottonwood Creek, there was um some. Some concern from neighbors in that area in that area about a public trail through there.
Oh, that's right, adjacent neighbors.
Yeah, we just wanted to leave the possibility open, this ordinance doesn't say that you have to build a trail if you.
But the trails and parks master plan, I'm saying that wrong, but it um, that's really the mechanism for what you're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
And unfortunately, that one, there's still some other sections, but that one section was moved off to the road. So if there's gonna be a trail in that area, it's gonna go on the road, according to that.
According to that that plan, and I think it's important that with any master plans, we have that layer planning, and then we have ordinances that work in harmony with those plans. And so um what I feel that we've achieved with this section of the ordinance is saying we're allowing what we're. Visioning here, and we're saying that it trails are allowed in any area, we're just wanting to put. Push more of the uh structures themselves farther away for purposes of the ordinance.
Anticipating that at some point, if connectivity of the Bonneville shoreline happens, that the traffic. Who are municipalities can explode, I'd love for us to make sure that our sister cities in Sandy and Draper, who have. Million-dollar homes abutting up there, I've, and to my understanding, haven't had major problems that we can. Might be worth asking to just say how, how their cities have handled those things and uh what things they would have done differently, just. Beginning with the end in mind, because at some point, we all anticipate that connectivity is gonna happen, and it would be. I I will expect that we'll hear from popular world residents and Taborchi residents and whatever goes in the gravel pit someday, you know. So anyway, just just thinking ahead a little bit, just looking over the fence a little, just, I I always like making sure that we're. Legislatively on the front end of things, not always having to be reactionary.
It definitely happens incrementally with trail projects, um, but what again, we've tried to accomplish with this is saying we're. Providing legal grounds for it to take place even when it does, um, so I hope that those clarifications. Kind of help convey the work we've done, um. Were there any other questions on any other riparian?
None on riparian.
Oh, come on, Lucy.
Right here. It's it's good, I just had one on a a word that's deleted in nineteen seventy-two seventeen, it's rezoning was deleted, and I'm just curious as to why.
At nineteen seventy-two, we said seventeen, seven one seventy. Probably.
Sorry, I should have written down the page number.
Oh, you're fine, Andy's an expert at.
So this is the.
Search by, I searched by rezoning, and it's the only place in the document where rezoning.
Okay, so this is the review of geologic hazards report section.
Yes.
City will review geologic hazards prior to consideration of any rezoning, plot of rural conditional use and others.
The, yeah, I could take a shot at this, the answer is um, when we do fault studies. You're mitigating fault hazards from buildings, from habitable structures. And a a request for a rezone doesn't have to be accompanied by any development proposal.
Oh, I see.
So we have no idea, you can rezone a property and never build on it.
Good point.
So it, I mean, you can, you can screen the property for fault lines, but you have to mitigate. And provide the specific engineering only once you have a an actual development proposed.
Which would then be triggered by the other processes listed there. And then top the building to conduct the study in relation to. Thank you.
I think they're really good.
Uh, one more question on the slopes, you mentioned that Wasatch. Anything east of Wasatch Boulevard doesn't apply, is that doesn't apply to the two acre?
The exception does not apply, yeah.
The exception.
A- any, I believe, natural thirty percent slope east of Wasatch is just undeveloped.
By natural reinterfing that, that um existing for what period of time, I mean, that's that's a hard thing, because.
Uh, do we also.
It is determined by the director.
Okay.
That's how we have it. Um.
So for example, like above uh Target, for example, that slope would be one.
And that would.
Slope of, you know.
We, if it were above Wasatch Boulevard, we, I mean, yeah, we would look at that, that's been existing in that condition for long enough. I mean, you can trace a a lot of slopes in the city back far enough to say, oh, yeah, well. It it was a gravel pit sixty years ago, before that, it wasn't anything, but um. It it's. It's the best we can do.
Yeah.
Given, I mean, because because if you go back a hundred years, then you can just go back two hundred and three hundred, you know, I don't know where you draw the line, but.
Does really help refine it that first and foremost, we're saying east of this boundary, so we're saying we're working. Anything that that is east of this boundary isn't even on the table for an exception to to apply on, because I think that does help kind of like refine it with a big push first. And then you're not working as much with. Areas like Target, saying is this a natural area or not, because it would not be east of Wasatch Boulevard.
So with the Wasatch Boulevard, there's, I mean, from a mining standpoint, just as a, they're they're continuing to pull uh material out. There is a maximum point because of where the property line goes up the mountainside. And how far back they can go, and when they get to a maximum slope there, that's that's the stopping point, that's when it's no longer viable.
And so, the whole mining operation is is governed under a mining agreement that we can't touch.
Exactly, which I completely, that, but it's a, but that that slope and the the depth that they can go. Is is, there's a governing body that is completely unrelated to any city function, but there is, there's a maximum, and I don't know the number, but there's a maximum. When you see how they how they work on it, they can only go back so far based on how high up on the mountain the property line is. And going horizontally back a certain distance, and so I don't, if there's some way that we could. Uh, dovetail with that in a seamless way, though, in a predictable and legal way, I don't know if there's. Again, I I'm not sure how we handle that, I, it would be an unreal expectation to expect somebody to. Return that slope back to the way it was a hundred years ago. But it also would make sense to say, probably wouldn't be wise to dig in any further than.
Correct, it's it's a reclamation, yeah, it's reclamation and and restoring slope stability at that point.
And so something, and I don't know what that is, again, that's that's kind of like you said, it's a, it's a mining question, Mike, but I think, you know, somewhere. Not not for this week, and maybe not even this year, but somebody doing a little bit of digging around to figure out what that looks like and. What's fair, you know, for the property owner, and that what's less likely to slide, given. All the sliding issues along the Wasatch front, you know, and what what could be, you know, highest and best use of a great piece of property too, so.
Sure.
Hey, any other questions or discussion? Commissioner Evler, anything? Any other questions?
I'm okay, I like, I had a lot of this similar question, so I just, I had big eyes, big ears, small mouth.
All right, well then, do we have a motion to close the working meeting and move on to our business team?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Good, see you in your next rounds.
See you in a couple.